While this meeting is ready for township board trustees to order, please stand with me and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing as our honorable treasurer cabinet gives our invocation.
Almighty God, we acknowledge that you will hold us to account for the way we legislate and administer the affairs of our township and its fine people. We pray for your guidance as we do so. We pray that you would find us protecting the rights of all at all times, that our community and this nation will fulfill all of your purposes. Amen.
Amen. Luke Sanders, please take the roll.
Clerk Sanders, here. Trustee Jackson, here. Treasurer Kavanaugh, here. Trustee Taylor, here. Trustee King, here. Trustee Reese, here. Supervisor McCray, here.
For Mr. President, the next agenda item is the approval of the agenda.
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move that we approve the agenda as written.
Support.
Supported by Treasurer Kavanaugh. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Next, we have citizen comments. I just want to remind anybody who comes up for citizen comments, you have three minutes, and this is a listening exercise for the board. It's not a commute, we don't talk back and forth, we listen to what you have to say. And make sure you be respectful when you're up there, because people here are your friends, neighbors, and business owners. And the first two are challenging last names, and I apologize. So first is Ryan. And Ryan, you can say your last name when you get up there, sir. I appreciate that.
Hi. My name is Ryan Bednarski. Address is 12831 Brady. This is a continuation of last week's speech about being cited for my front yard garden. I've compiled a list of communities that allow front yard gardens in their ordinances. First, Ipselany, 1183A, Section 122-529 states the following may be located anywhere on a lot: trees, plants, shrubs, gardens, and hedges. Two, Two Rivers, Wisconsin, Section 10115, Height and Area Expectation states: Produce gardening is permissible in front yards by meeting the following criteria: Produce gardens must be planted in raised beds and/or containers. Materials that raised beds can be built from: bricks and cinder blocks, natural and manufactured stones, plastic, milled wood and logs, corrugated metal and metal troughs, four-foot setback and three-foot maximum plant height. Maplewood, Minnesota, Ordinance 983, Allowing Front Yard Garden and Permaculture. This section amends the Maplewood zoning code to allow code to allow front yard gardening and permaculture as a permitted use in all residential zoning districts. Additionally, Ordinance 982 allows community and market gardens in any zoning district. Tulsa, Oklahoma, Yard Maintenance Web Page states: Garden areas must be tended and cultivated. And Section 65.030 states agricultural uses of land are exempt from landscaping and screening regulations of this chapter. Five, Ann Arbor, Michigan, has a resolution to support pollinator habitat. Section 316 carves out an exemption from the 12-inch height restriction for cultivated beds or planned natural landscape. They have a pollinator-aware yard care webpage which lays out the why and the how, and also allows residents to request signage. Five, Sacramento, California, on April 3, 2007, Sacramento amended Section 17.68.010 of Ordinance Number 2007-025 to remove arbitrary restrictions on vegetables and fruit in diversified landscapes. The amended ordinance states the landscape may include grass, annuals, perennials, ground cover, shrubs, trees, or any design elements such as planters, rocks, mulch, or similar elements when integrated as part of the landscape. Pros of urban gardening: Neighborhood development. Gardening in the front yard encourages neighbors to interact and build community. Gardens encourage community interaction, reducing crime and increasing neighborhood safety. Diverse front yard landscapes beautify neighborhoods and enhance home values. By working together, gardening builds stronger value. Family bonds. Home gardens provide easy access to healthy food. Home gardens present educational opportunities such as gardening, botany, natural ecology, and the value of healthy food. Gardening has been America's number-one hobby for at least four decades. And then again, the request of the trustees is to clarify why vegetable gardens are considered a violation under the current township code. Consider updating and interpreting ordinances so that residents can maintain front yard gardens without fear citations, and promote Redford as a health, a community that supports sustainability, healthy eating, and pride in property upkeep. Thank you for your time.
Good job. One second is fair. Good job, thank you. Next is Mike. Can I, well, I'll say Mike's last name? Mike, you get, please. And I apologize, I just don't want to kill your name, all right? So you can say it up there and give us the address.
Mike Garib.
Okay.
So, my name is Mike Garib. I'm from US 24 Auto Group and 96 and Telegraph, the used car law. So we've been in Redford Township since 2013, me and my partner, the other Mike. And we just moved to, in 2017, to that location in 96 and Telegraph. In 2022, we expanded the mechanic shop next door, it was an empty land. So I believe we built a nice building. And we were in a September meeting with the site committee, planning commission committee. And the vote, we were trying to move to the motel next door, just the dealership, and combine all the parcels together and make an auto mall. So the meeting, the voting wasn't in our favor in the September meeting, so... I mean, we're trying to build a nice auto mall instead of that motel, because as you, everyone knows, it's been causing problems throughout the years. And we're still, we're still having issues with people coming in, trying to break in, break the glass. And everybody knows, you know, what kind of people come through that area. So what we're trying to do is, we're trying to move the dealership from just two, two addresses down and combine everything to make them an auto mall. And we're trying to build a nice building. All I want to know is, what, what does it take from the city to let, let us know? What, what do we need to do to get the approval to make an auto mall in that, you know, in that address? Because it's a bigger property, and that's exactly what we're looking for. And we're going to combine everything and make an auto mall. And we haven't had any issues with the city since we've been in Redford. No issues, no police interactions, but no, nothing, no problems at all.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you. Next, we have a special presentation from Plant Moran. Adam, you wanted to do the introductions, please?
Sure, we have our partner, Bill Bricky, along with one of his colleagues, Dean, who are here to present our audited financial statements as of March 31st.
Okay. Well, thank you for that introduction, Adam, and good evening, everybody. I'm Bill Bricky with Plant Moran, and with me today is Dean, and we're going to talk about the audit for the year ended March 31, 2025. So, so hopefully, when we talk about the audit, there's three separate deliverables that you should have in your packet tonight. We have the financial statements themselves, which is the large bound document. We have our end-of-audit letter, which we often refer to as our management letter. And then finally, we have the Audit of Federal Awards, which is the compliance audit on the federal grants. So we have covered all of these documents in detail with management. And our goal tonight is to provide you a real high-level summary, and certainly address any questions that you may have related to these documents or the audit process itself. Before we get going, just want to take a brief moment and really thank Adam and Jaclyn and your entire team for their assistance with the audit. We are here for several months during the audit, and your team just does a great job helping us complete it in an efficient manner. So we appreciate all of their efforts. So the, the first thing I want to highlight is, is really our main deliverable to your, as your auditor, is our opinion on your financial statements. And the township did receive an unmodified audit opinion again in the current year, and that means the financial statements are in compliance with all the rules and regulations. And we often refer to that as a clean audit report. You would see that in the financial statements on page one. So happy to say we had no issues there. You did receive the clean audit report. So what I thought I'd do is, is bring Dean up, and Dean will talk a little bit about some of the financial highlights of the current year. And then I'll conclude by going through a single audit, talking about the grant compliance audit, and cover a few other audit matters. So Dean?
Again, just to echo what Bill said, really appreciate Adam and Jaclyn's work on the audit. Really couldn't do it without them, so we appreciate that time. But a couple items to highlight in the audit this year is looking at the general fund performance. The general fund has an increase of $476,000 in the current year as revenues of $51.2 million exceeded expenditures of $50.8 million. And the township ended the year with an unassigned fund balance of $25.4 million. So as many of you know, the unassigned fund balance are funds that are not designated or restricted to certain uses. So it's kind of like a measure of financial flexibility, so the more unassigned fund balance you have.
Are we, are we, are we going through a, a book, if so?
No, no, well, just kind of highlighting.
This is just highlighting.
Yeah, this is just highlighting.
So I was going to ask searching for what you're talking about.
Yeah, yeah, no specific pages. I mean, you'll be able to find that.
But I didn't want us to keep looking, right?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I saw you looking, so I was like, oh, better stop.
Okay, go ahead, Dean.
Yeah, but that essentially is, shows strong financial position, having an unassigned fund balance of about $25.4 million. Next, we want to look at the ARPA grant. So in the current fiscal year, the township spent approximately $1.3 million of its ARPA funds on various projects throughout the township. And as of now, they have, you have $1.8 million remaining funds to be expended, but that has to be used by December 31, 2026. So just wanted to highlight that, to make sure those monies are being used. And to recap, the township received about $22 million back in 2021. And again, these have been used on various projects throughout the township to help build and shape your community. Next, the Wellness Center. So the township continues to make safe progress on that project. During the current year, $9.8 million of expenses have been incurred on that project, and you'll see that going forward as it continues to develop. And then lastly, just wanted to look at the change in the retiree healthcare during the current year. So the liability for both the general employees and the police and fire employees decreased. The general employees decreased about $6.2 million, and the police and fire decreased at about $29.8 million. The reason for the decrease in that liability was there was an increase in the discount rate. So essentially, as the, the discount rate increases, that future liability will decrease in present day dollars. And it was due to a change in the investment strategy at the township. Monies were previously held in cash, but now this has been put into more stocks and different investment vehicles, which has created a bigger expected return. That then decreases the future liability. But that's it, as far as the financial statement highlights. I'll turn it back over to Dean.
Thanks. Dean, and we covered a, a few items there real quickly. Again, just trying to give a, a real brief, you know, Cliff Bill's version of what's in that 100-page document you have there. So moving on from the numbers a little bit, want to spend just a minute and talk about the federal awards audit that we do. So the township was able to take advantage of about $4.8 million in total grant funds in the current year. And one of the requirements is, when you have over $750,000 in federal grants, we have to audit your compliance with those grant procedures. So in the current year, we, we actually audited three of the grants, federal grants that you have. So we did the, the COVID ARPA funds that Dean had mentioned earlier. We also audited the assistance with firefighter grants and also the CDVG grants. So all of those, we would have looked at your compliance there. Happy to report, we had no question costs in those grants, so you complied with, with all of those aspects. And all of the opinions that we issued on your compliance were unmodified. So really positive results when it, when it comes to compliance with the grants. And so although we did issue unmodified, unmodified opinions on both the financial statements and these single auditor, or the federal grant, grant compliance, we did have three internal control matters related to the financial statement audit, and three internal control matters related to the single audit. And, and again, these are items that we identified. There, there weren't errors, there weren't anything like that. But we do need to report any weaknesses that we identify so that you can choose to kind of address them, and management can, can work on that. So the three items, and these are included in that single audit report on page 11 through 16. And you'll see in there a very detailed description of the issues. Also, on the bottom, as management's plan to correct them. So I want to just briefly kind of talk about what they are. The first one related to financial statements is the bank reconciliations were prepared, and they were accurate, but they just weren't timely. It took several months for the final bank reconciliation to be completed. I know the township is working hard to kind of hone that process of reconciling the bank accounts. And again, in the current year, it's really just the timeliness of that that needs to be kind of tightened up. So ideally, those would be done within, you know, within 30 to 60 days of the end of the month. In addition to that, the accounting records were not, you know, totally closed when we came out to do the audit. There were adjustments that continued to be made throughout, throughout the process. And, and, and with that, there were some auditor identified journal entries that were required to be made to, to ensure the financial statements were in compliance with rules and regulations. So we point that out. And then finally, there were, there was one error related to the recording of leases. So the township had leased some vehicles back, you know, in the prior year, right near the end of the year. And they actually weren't recorded until the current year under audit. So there was just a little bit of a cutoff issue there with the timing of when those items were recorded. So those were the three financial statement items that, that we comment on in the report. And then in addition to that, there were three federal award audits. And when it comes to our, our findings on the federal awards, some of these might, might seem nitpicky, and they are, but we kind of have to follow the federal guidance, and it's, it's kind of a yes/no kind of item. So the first item we have relates to the fact that one of the requirements is, is when you're spending federal dollars, you have to check and see if the vendors are suspended or debarr'd by the federal government. There was no evidence that that testing was done by the township. There, there was no retained evidence. We were, we were told it was done, and when we indeed looked at those vendors, they were not suspended or, or debarr'd. But again, there was no support to prove it. And so that shows up as a finding in there. In addition to that, there were certain reports that were prepared and submitted that were not reviewed. So, so again, we tested those reports, and they were accurate, but there was no evidence that they were, that they were reviewed. So one person prepared it and submitted it. So in theory, there could have been an error that would have been caught. And, and so again, that's a finding under the fed, under the federal grant compliance rules, because those things should be reviewed. And then the final item relates to the CDVG grant. There's a requirement, when you have a subrecipient that you're passing money through, that you file a report with the federal government on that. And that report was not filed. And I think that was just merely, merely an oversight, because the township wasn't aware that they had to file that report. Nobody, nobody had mentioned it. And it was a new thing in the current year. So again, I know going through those findings, it sounds like nobody wants to have findings. But again, you know, to me, the most important thing is, you know, you did receive unmodified opinions on all your audits, and there was no question cost on anything. These are more or less things that should be looked at, you know, and addressed just to strengthen the overall controls of the township, just to eliminate, you know, any potential errors that could happen due to those items. So with that, I'll pause there, see if there's any questions on anything or anything that we didn't cover that you'd like us to talk about tonight.
Well, I guess I'd like to start off by, you know, I, I think we have a really great team that takes care of all that. And, you know, I don't know all the circumstances. I know some of the circumstances of how things happened and everything. But I, I think with the amount of work and the amount of money and everything that we process and the news, all the different things we are working with, it doesn't sound like we did anything majorly bad. It was mostly a clerical error at best. You know, and, you know, with ARPA dollars, we always struggled. It's a moving target all the time, so who knows? They change it all the time. So I just don't want anybody that's listening to this going, holy God, because it's not that at all. You know, circumstances are different this year than they have been in the past. And I have complete confidence in our people that do the job. So I just want to make sure that it's not looming doom, that they're doing a good job. These are clerical things that, for different reasons, got missed. So. Anybody have anything from the board?
Okay. Go, go ahead, Adam.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. I, I would agree with that statement. You know, it's, it's difficult, and, you know, Bill and Dean did a nice job of boiling this down to a 15-minute presentation, but the audit really does kind of consume, you know... I've talked to some of my colleagues, and they're like, yeah, the auditors are here for five days. And I just laugh, because the auditors are usually here for six weeks. So it really is a process that Jaclyn, in her role as the Assistant Finance Director, and Rita Starr, you know, as soon as the books close, in April, May, June, July, and August, and part of September, are really all consumed with the audit. So it really is something. And Jaclyn really does do 95% of the lion's share of this. She really deserves the credit for the fact that it is an unmodified audit every year. This is the first year since I've been the finance director that we didn't have long arguments about the findings, which was nice. But I really do appreciate that, because it really is... You know, something like the CDVG finding, it's just, it's difficult, because the federal government puts out changes to the uniform guidance, and it comes out as the 600-page update, and buried somewhere on page 372, you know, as this paragraph that applies to, oh, by the way, we changed this threshold. So sometimes it's just a matter of catching up to where it's at. But, so I really appreciate that. But thank you to the team, because obviously, we couldn't do it without you either. So thank you very much.
The Chair?
Treasurer Kavanaugh.
Just a, a small comment as well, is that we, we do thank you, because you guys do get the brunt of the audit, since they go to you, and then you come to us. But thank you to everybody involved, of course. But also, you have to understand as well that our partners, such as the banks, also lag in some of what they give us, the statements. They're not always on time. So you do have to look at the partners that also have a part in how it all rolls out. So, again, but we're working on, on that, aren't we, Ann?
We're working on it. Plant Moran has said before, as a township weary, complicated township. You don't see townships like us that have the number of enterprise funds that we do, golf courses, water and sewer, a CDVG program, tiffs, brownfields. Like, we have all of those things, right? Most communities of our size just don't. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Anything else from the board? Okay, thank you very much for the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank the team for all the work they do.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay. Next is the consent agenda, Treasurer Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Supervisor McCray. I move to approve the consent agenda items as follows: The minutes for the regular meeting held on September 23 of 2025; The minutes of the special meeting held on September 30 of 2025; The warrant list of bills as of October 8 of 2025 in the amount of $29,250,253 cents. Receive and file the audited financial statements as of March 31 of 2025.
Support. Supported by Trustee Jackson. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion carries. Moving to new business, Director Bonner, for your shore.
Thank you, Mr. Supervisor. With us this evening is our bond counsel, Pat McGowan from Miller Canfield, along with Director Dennis, our DPS director. This is a necessary step, of course. Anytime we go out to bond, and the board approved this type of resolution just a few months ago, it seems like, for the dwarf project, right? And so this is very similar to that. We've been talking to you about wanting to, not wanting, the need to replace the meter interface units on every household, right? That's the unit that communicates back to the water department, tracking your usage, because the current models are reaching end of life, and they're not, they're no longer making that model. So as they're failing, that then requires manual reads, it's becoming a real problem. And we've been planning, and it was already in the plan, to do this as a three-year project. And originally, we were thinking that we would just work into the rates and set aside kind of each year a third of the project. But looking at everything else that's been going on with the CSO basins and everything else, we realized that this was a better funding option. So it's not changing the long-term cost of what this project is, but it will allow us, by doing a bonding process, to pay off this project over more years. And that's why it's become appealing. So that's why this is before you today, in this sense. But with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. McGowan to talk about what the resolution is that you're approving.
Great, thank you. Good evening, members of the board. As Adam said, this is a first step in a two-step, two-step process for financing. I know I was here just a few months ago for the much larger project. And really looking at this, the township looked at a couple different options for financing. We decided that doing a capital improvement bond like this was going to be the most efficient and lowest cost of financing. So the idea here is, is that the cost of these water meter interface units would be financed over approximately 10 years, so that you weren't, you know, paying that over the next three years. And that'll spread out that cost a little bit, in light of everything else that the water and sewer department are paying for. So this action item approves a notice of intent to indicate the township's intent to issue bonds in an amount net to exceed $5 million. Now, that number is higher than what we expect. I think right now, the estimate's somewhere closer to four and a half or less. And that will be refined between now and when we actually go to issue the bonds in a few months. It authorizes the clerk to publish a notice of intent newspaper that notifies taxpayers of the intent to issue bonds. Even though it says they are backed and pledged, and the township is pledging its taxing power, the expectation is that this is going to be paid for from the water user charges and the water system revenues. After the 45-day referendum expires, assuming there's no referendum petition, we'd be looking to sell bonds. Given the timing of the calendar year, we're kind of targeting the first part of January instead of trying to ram this in there between Thanksgiving and Christmas. So the idea would be looking at a financing in early '26, so the money would be available to pay the rest of the cost of these meter interface units. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board? Seems pretty cut and dry, huh? So... So to the Chair. Well, Trustee Reese.
I guess just for my clarification. So we plan on doing this just out of the, out of the fund, the water sewer budget, over three years. Is this just giving us flexibility where we're not outlaying so much money so quickly?
Yes, because paying for it in three years, I'd have to work $2 million into the rate for the next three years versus doing it over 10 years. I've only got to work up a few hundred thousand into the rate. So it will keep the rates lower and be more sustainable. That, that's really why. And so, and the other benefit of doing it this way... And so, and the other benefit of doing it this way, from, starting with the financing, is that we can just do the whole thing at once. So originally, when Mike was talking to the vendors about doing this, they were going to do a third of the project in '25, '26, a third next year, a third next year. But given the situation of being able to get the meters, we want to just be able to do it all at once. And in that case, we need the money now.
And that helps us to not have to manage an additional project for three years while doing the CSO basin and other.
Correct. If I could also add, we've changed the scope of the project. We're going to be doing this in 18 months now. We're not going to go 36 months, same cost. He said if you do it in 18 months, he goes, I'll do it at the same cost. I'll just get more people here. And so that's also going to help us out, that we're going to get this done a lot quicker, too.
Yeah. Great.
And we don't have to, we don't technically have to wait for the bonding to finish to be able to start the project either. Like, we can, because it's still included in the process. You know what I mean? Like, as long as, as long as the bids don't come back higher than we expect them to.
To the Chair. So when will the rates be affected at all? Could that be next year?
Next year. Though it's entirely possible that they won't really be impacted, right? Like, that's a little bit of the unknown at the moment, right? We've worked most of what we think we'll have to work into the rate related to the CSO basin already. But we, because we haven't begun those actual principal payments yet, I could be ahead of the game. I could be ahead of where I'm thinking I'm going to be. So worst-case scenario, I've got to work this into next year's rates. Best-case scenario, it's already worked into the rate.
Okay. All right, keep me posted. Thank you.
Yeah.
The question is from the board. Also, he's starting in three weeks.
The project is starting in three weeks, yes.
Great.
November 11th, was it? You were estimating.
November 3rd.
3rd? Okay. That's right, okay. All right, thank you.
Okay. So you know the questions from board? What's the pleasure of the board?
To the Chair.
Trustee Jackson.
I move approval of the Notice of Intent Resolution, Charter Township of Redford Capital Improvement Bonds for Water Meter Interface Unit Replacement Project.
Support. Supported by Trustee Reese. So the motion is for approval of the Notice of Intent Resolution, Charter Township of Redford Capital Improvement Bonds for Water Meter Interface Unit Replacement Project. Any other questions? Roll call both.
Trustee Reese?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Eric Sanders?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Treasure Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Trustee Jackson?
Yes.
Supervisor McPhee?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, it's from the board. Hearing no announcements, I, I just want to say a big thank you to our water department for all the hours they put in taking care of those rates, which we won't name them because they happen to do. So, so they, they spent many hours out there, and they rotated shifts. Trustee Taylor was kind enough to bring them some donuts, so that was very nice of you. So we appreciate our employees, and I just want to say thank you for your job well done.
Bravo.
Bravo.